The time is now seven for Unit One, it looks like, and I would like to call our meeting to order. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call? Or actually, before you proceed with the roll call, I would be relieved now. We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor the gratitude of the land itself and the indigenous peoples who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide, the forced displacement by non-Native settlers, and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Dorian, yes. Trustee, no.
Here.
Trustee, yes.
On your.
Trustee, yeah. President Grayberg.
Here, thank you very much. We'd now like to welcome our visitors to our meeting. Thank you very much for your instrumental effort. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of Last Month's Minutes. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding that? We have a motion to approve Last Month's Minutes as presented.
Setled. First.
We have a motion to approve Last Month's Minutes that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Dorian, yes. Trustee, yes. Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Poots, yes. President Grayberg.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved Last Month's Minutes. And we're now on to Agenda Item Number Five, Financial Matters. Julie, can you let us know how we're doing?
All right, well, we are 25% through the year. And as you can see from the expenditure report, we are 21.3% expended for the year, so we're doing well there. You will also notice that there is no revenue report in this month's packet. And the expenditure report looks exactly as it did last month. That's because Caitlin was able to get our expenditure report out of the EDIN financial software that the village had used previously. But as of today, the village is in the process of transferring to a new software called UNIS. And I will tell you that this transition has not gone smoothly in any way. There are... They have no idea how to get us the revenue report, as you are used to seeing it, or anything even close to that. The invoice listings, as you can see in your packet, are very different. And those actually take considerably longer for Caitlin to take that report and manipulate it into a readable form for your packet. And it was uncertain until late last week that we would actually be able to get the invoices input into the new software the way the village wanted them input, much less actually get bills paid this month. So at this point, we are... We are still unable to continue to add invoices the way the village wants them. The village has asked that the library scan all invoices and attach them within the software to the electronic form. We are unable to do that at this time. We are unable to view any attachments in the UNIS software at this time. Scott Anderson, our business office assistant, had to physically walk to the village with the invoices, have one of the village employees get him onto a computer there, and then attach all of those scanned documents to the invoices in the UNIS system in order for us to be able to pay our bills this month. There is no timeline for the resolution of any of this. So you will get things, and we are able to get them and give them to you. And we'll keep you updated. Yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. It's just the library right now that is unable to access all of the reports. No, I have this. Yeah.
I assume that I will be responsible for those access, right?
Yes. I have contacted everybody that I can, so.
And so we wait. At this point, Scott is not able to import the additional invoices in anticipation of the April meeting. So between that and the not being able to get reports back out of the system, we're a little stymied on how this project is going.
Well, we did write checks.
The checks are written. There are... We have actual paper checks that need to be mailed. And all of the electronic funds transfer stubs came from the village. So theoretically, all the payments will happen on time for April. We'll see what happens then.
On time means lenders are on time.
Yes.
Which affects our account. So we still... And I guess we can still, so we can go through, what we have and the invoices, obviously. But it just seems kind of... It's almost, I don't know, whether it should be acknowledgement or... I guess we just approve. This is the best we're able to get. I approve Caitlin's efforts. Does anyone have any additional questions for Julie or Caitlin? We have a motion to approve a limited financial report as presented, including the April 2022 invoices. Okay, we have a motion to approve... We have a motion to approve the financial matters set forth in Agenda Item Number Five that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call?
Trustee Dorian, yes. Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Poots, yes. President Grayberg.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the financial matters as presented. And we're now on to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Comment on Agenda Items. Do we have any public comment on Agenda Items? Okay, thank you very much. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Public Comment on Other Library Business. Thank you. We're now on to Agenda Item Eight A, Equity Strategic Plan.
Right. And I would like to introduce Rashida Graham-Washington, who is our EDI consultant, who's led our equity advisory team through the process to create this equity strategic plan, and the members of the equity advisory team who could be with us here tonight. Our Assistant Manager for Adult and Teen Services, Van McGarry; our PR Manager, Cindy Catree; one of our community members, Pastor Andy Voitovich; and our Computer Help Desk Associate, Omar Martin. Thank you all for being here with us tonight. And we're going to hand it off to Rashida to get us started.
Thank you all so much for allowing me to participate alongside you in this work and for your great patience as we have... Argus, we've been working on this strategic plan for probably longer than it would take if we weren't working during the pandemic and trying to do in-person and digital, in-zone, and all things. So it's been an interesting ride, but we have prevailed. I've trained with the board, and as such, you'll recall when I talked about the importance of the italics, right? That oftentimes we make policy, or we change a procedure, or there's some new process that we put forth to the staff or to the community, and there isn't always a clear understanding of the due process or due diligence that accompanies this policy. Consequently, we end up retrying the entire policy or process again. So one of the things that I think is really important for our time together tonight is to name some of that context. So we've done quite a work, and I just want to refer to my notes, too, just to make sure I'm not missing anything. Here we go. So this strategic plan came as a result of the work that we did in the discovery process to create the after-action report that you all had the opportunity to spend time with over the last year. And then in that after-action report, there were recommendations for how we would move forward. Some of them was just to develop a team and to develop a strategic plan. And then others of those recommendations were things that eventually got included in the strategic plan. There was also the recommendation of comprehensive shared training so that everyone in the organization, all of the stakeholders, would sort of be on the same page, and have a common and shared language and understanding about the work we hope to set out to do together. This was to ensure that we wouldn't get in the midst of the work and have miscommunications and misunderstandings about how we hope to do the work together. I think that that has afforded us a wonderful opportunity for symmetry and synergy as we produce this plan together. One of the trainings that was a part of that process was looking at the four quadrants of racism. And as we took to that work and came to better understand those four quadrants, the team was faced with a decision of how we would develop the strategic plan. One way to develop that plan is to look at the way the organization's strategic plan is already structured and to use those priorities to just weave the EDI anti-racism work into a structure that already exists. The risk in that is that oftentimes the EDI or anti-racism work gets lost in the sauce. We wanted to make sure that we would zoom out, highlight this work at a high level, and then think about how to push it back into the strategic plan after we held ourselves accountable to some intentionality about this work. So the decision was made to use the four quadrants of racism in order to define internal and external goals for the library. So that's the context for how we decided to use the structure we used to develop the plan. As we started into that journey, we went very deep on each of the four quadrants, looking at goals and objectives, tasks and evaluations, needs of measurement, and budget for several goals and objectives internally and externally for each of those quadrants. That act of love took us quite some time. And I feel like it's important to name because there was a lot of detail involved, a lot of discussion that was involved. And we ended up with a plan that was robust enough for the library to really only focus on EDI forever. The reality is that the library has a bunch of other work to do. And so it seemed fine to me. But I don't have anything else to do. And so what we did start to do is, now that we've taken this deep dive, are there ways to synergize some of the goals and objectives we've made to make it more concise, to make it more efficient, to make it sustainable and viable, and to make it a document that people could easily and readily understand? So after we dug all the way into the weeds, then we went back and synergized those goals and objectives to make the document you see in front of you today. That whole journey has been a process of learning, of professional development, of human transformation, probably for all of us, that we think is probably invaluable. It took us to places as colleagues and team members that will probably forever inform the way that the strategic plan plays out by way of implementation. I felt like it was really important to name that part of the process because you can look at this... Like, as I look at this document, I'm like, it does not do justice to the deep dive and the analysis and the critical lens that we took as a collective to what needed to land on the page in the end. And it also would never speak to the transformative work in professional development that's inherent in such a process. I think I've said everything I intended to say tonight. I definitely want to leave room. I know that you all have had the document for a while and have had an opportunity to sit with it. And so rather than to bore you with walking through the details of the plan, I want to open it up first for the team to share your thoughts and impressions, the ways that this challenged you and stretched you as well, and some of the celebrations that came on that journey. And then we can take questions and comments from the board as well.
Hey, I'll start, I guess. This process for me really was transformative because as somebody who identifies as Indigenous Color, it was really interesting to see how the four quadrants of racism have manifested itself within just libraries in general. And to be able to look at how we can create a more inclusive space... And it's not just about racism. We made a very conscious decision to make this about equity. And so we are talking about making the library more inclusive for individuals of all kinds of identities and communities. And it really... You know, I grew up here in Downers Grove, and it made me feel like our library cares about my family, about me as an individual, as a staff member. And I think that the goals that we're putting forth are really to create a more equitable space and to create a better workplace for us as staff members and to really help create a community in which we are able to grow and learn together. And I love that the library, a place for lifelong learning, is able... We're able to help lead that charge. It makes me very grateful to be a community member and a staff member here. So I'm just really proud of the work we did. I'm really grateful to the community members who helped out and to RGW for helping to lead this and for being a part of the community here as library staff number one for that is supportive in allowing us to look at us as people and encourage our community members to show up as their authentic selves. It's just... I'm so grateful, so.
I'm a staff person here at the library. I work in the IT department, so customer service is important to me. Working with this group also touched something a little bit mean because we want to make a place that's even closer to everyone. And I know there are times where, you know, everyone has different opinions about things, myself, but it's more of a learning process. So definitely thankful that we had the opportunity to look at the board on these processes. As everyone said before, it's been a learning experience for us all, so. Thank you.
In RGW, we spend a lot of time thinking about values and kind of the wishy-washy aspects of things. So we talk about what diversity and inclusion means. But to get to do this work and see what that looks like tangibly and how difficult it can be, right? So when we were talking about what requirements are needed for someone to hold a position, and are those necessary? But then when you move those requirements, suddenly the system that determines the work of that position goes down, right? So how do you address all these things? I think that has impacted me, hopefully with everything that I do. I'm in a variety of DEI groups. And this is the one where I feel like what we did has the most meaning. I see the potential impact for what this means for our vibrating community. And as it happened, right, got to experience firsthand how important this work is. You know, when I got doxxed because of some of the work I'm doing in the community for LGBTQ youth, the anti-hate statement, like to know that you've got a neighbor who has your back when there are people posting things and you don't know if that angry person is in the grocery store with you or somewhere five states away, is just a huge level of comfort and safety. You know, is seeing the relationships that the library has built with our Youth Outlook Drop-In Center, intentionally seeking to grow and improve the library is working with and how that work happens. So this has been, I mean, an incredible experience. And I can't wait to take this document and to think about what that looks like in my other areas of work. So what does equity look like for our Youth Outlook Drop-In Center? What does it look like in the church, right? And we know that big communities often have a lot of work to do here. So I am incredibly grateful for that. And to get to spend time with the staff... We have such an incredible staff at the library. I just have the greatest appreciation for the staff as people and as staff. I mean, it is amazing to think about the things that you do each day. And when you're constantly on display, right? Like, when you work for the public, there's not much space for you to be human sometimes. And it can be really hard. So I'm so grateful, so grateful and thankful that I was invited to be part of this process. And I look forward for what still looks like.
I'd like to add on to what Andy just mentioned about how this plan really shows that there are tangible ways that we can carry out this EDI work. We often say in libraries that we're a welcoming place, and especially here at EDPL, we're a place where everyone can discover, grow, play, and learn. And with this equity strategic plan, we demonstrate specific ways how we can truly live up to that and ways in which we can work on ourselves internally as individuals, as well as organizationally as a team. And then even beyond that, institutionally and externally, being advocates in our field, in our community, in our state, our country. We have very specific implementations or steps in which we can truly make the world a more equitable, inclusive, and diverse place. And I am very excited about how EDPL is continuing to live up to our mission and our values and leading the way for so many people to partake in that as well.
I want to apologize for missing a couple of folks, particularly Barnali, who was our Barnali Fittier, our trustee representative, mom of the EDI advisory team. I also served on the team. We also have a number of staff members who could not be here and some who started the process with us and were unable to finish, some who came on kind of in the middle of the process and moved with us through the end. Former village council member Captain Agrey was one of the initial members of this equity team and unfortunately moved to Texas during the process. So Janelle Robinson from Hope's Front Door has continued with us on this journey. She wanted to be here tonight, but unfortunately had an emergency that she needed to take care of. Also, staff member Emily Keeng, who started with the group, eventually took a different job and is only a substitute with us now, but she has been able to continue with us. Some other staff members who participated along the way were JR DeNesco, Latricia Thompson, Claire Ong, and Marifini Sperren. So though they weren't able to... Some of them were with us a very short time. Some of them never even made an actual meeting, but were able to, you know, maybe be in some of our discussions and provide some feedback. It was wonderful to have the participation of each and every one of those individuals who helped us go on there.
Would you like to comment, Barnali, or Mr. Eldred?
Sure. Being a board member is a really interesting thing. We are tasked with holding the mission of the library. And I am so immensely proud to uphold and to... I'm just so proud of the staff. I'm so honored to be a board member of this library. We learned, we healed, we grew. It was transformative. And the things that I really love about this is the opportunity for us as board members and staff to know one another and to kind of break down that wall that exists because I think that's how we'll move forward to heal our community as well. So I am just eternally grateful for you to ask me to be part of this and to Rashida and everybody. So all of those things, lots and lots of... I can't say more because I'll start crying.
Yeah, I'll, I guess, start, you know, a couple of board comments, I guess, at least from my perspective. And these are just, I think, sort of randomly placed. I think the first one is that during our initial meeting, initial RGW meeting, I remember that, you know, it was maybe a two-hour meeting call, and there was essentially one kind of critical point that was reinforced for me, which was, we learn, we grow, we're uncomfortable. And I think that this process has been uncomfortable. I think that, which I think has been good. I think Cindy and Van, like, make me uncomfortable. Very positive way, very positive way. I missed that, though, so. Now, the... So I think that, to me, has been kind of a guiding principle throughout kind of the entire process. I think just to, I think, repeat some of the comments. And Omar, your point about being a customer service. And this is great to have a plan, but if it's not actually implemented... I mean, this is a team effort here, and you're on the front lines. And so it really is the staff that ultimately needs to, you know... And I know and I'm confident will act on the plan, have been acting on the plan already. And I think just to acknowledge, I think, also, I mean, I know there are a lot of people that have been involved with this process, but I know, again, just to mention Van and Cindy again, and just from my board member's perspective, you've really been critical to the process from the beginning. And so thank you for that, and just keep up the good work.
Well, first, I just want to thank everyone so much for just the countless hours that you've put into this and, you know, were willing to go super, super deep and then come up with kind of like a surface-level, you know, document that just probably only touches the tip of the iceberg when it comes to all of this work. But I think it's important to have a document like this for community members to understand and for those of us that aren't doing the deep dive that you are. And I really was really impressed with the way the documents are organized. I think the documents are organized by quadrants. And each and every subheading has, you know, action items, very, very specific action items, you know, down to the software being used for surveys. And I really appreciated the part that talks about kind of alternative ways of growing a career here at the library without a master's. I think that's so important to speak volumes to, you know, systemic racism and, you know, systemic prejudice in the education system. And it was just that, that really... I was very impressed with just that, you know, piece of it. But just thank you guys so much again for all your work.
Well, I'm so proud to be part of this group of people sitting in this building. It's a joy to be a part of it. And I think back a few years when this topic first came up in this board. I've been on this board a long time. It should have come up 20 years ago, but... And I remember when it came up, part of me was...
it came up, part of me was saying, yes, we have to do this. This is, this is just a basic thing that any public organization in a community like Dahmer's Grove needs to do. And another part of me said, but it's all the rest of the people, it's not me, because I already know all this stuff, and I've supported immensely. And boy, it was very long. And I have learned so much in this process myself that I thought I knew a lot. I certainly did a couple of lines in here which are very obvious lines, but I think they're worth reading anyway. There are a couple of goals, there's some, all of the goals are very important, but one of them, create a welcoming and accepting and inclusive workplace where all staff are treated with dignity and respect. I don't need to add any words to that, let's just. And then another line, which is a little bit longer if I can find it here. Demonstrate that the library represents and welcomes all historically intentionally and traditionally marginalized people groups for Dahmer's Grove, the Midwest region, and the library profession, and the expansion of equity diversity and inclusion practices. And what I don't mean to single two things up, saying they're the most important, but those are two lines that really hit me, and it showed me, it reminded me of, in being the rest of this, is how much work we have to do. Thank you for giving us a growth plan. And keep at us. I mean, when I say us, I mean us, all of us. We have to, we have to realize and implement the strategic plan. Thank you.
I will just jump in to say that the one major edit that we came up with during last night's Equity Team meeting, where we were talking about how we were going to present this, is actually in that same goal that you just read, which is kind of the external, no, we changed the word "represents" to "advocates for," because after reading through it again, we really thought that representing all pit MPGs, historically, intentionally, and traditionally marginalized people groups, that was not something that we could do, but we can advocate for them. And so that is the one major edit that we made in that process.
Well, thank you for doing that, and just demonstrates this is a living document, not a, not something that goes on a shelf for us to watch. And there may be more things like that, and if you want to tweak, then I will be up just fine.
And just one, and I'm not sure if Rashida can comment to this, or Dan, I'm not sure who would be the person, but one thing I think just to kind of, what you were saying, Rashida, having kind of the record of kind of how we've, you know, come to where we're at, most of the items are really geared towards when people are coming to the library, or people are working at the library, people are, people are here. And then there's one very external one, which is making statements. And so I would just, I think for the record of this meeting, it would be good to just kind of reinforce, you know, kind of why that's part of the strategic plan and kind of the thought process we have. I'll let whoever would like to go with that.
Well, I can start. It's, again, as we're advocating for all of the historically, intentionally, traditionally marginalized people groups in our community, one of the most visible ways we can do that is to offer that support when those members of our community are in pain or have are suffering, or that there is something happening, and acknowledging that that is happening and really being very intentional about saying, we stand with you, we see you, we're here, you will always be welcome in the library. And I think that that is absolutely, that's the way that we will make sure that we hit that target, that this library is welcoming for everyone in our community.
I'm not the people, Shaya, I'm not.
Just to add on to that, you know, it feels very external, the statements, but it is very much an internal piece too, because these statements are for staff members to know that the meaning of their communities is not being ignored by the coworkers. And it's also an opportunity for us to demonstrate to people who might be afraid to leave their house, that this is a safe place to come into the library. You know, at the beginning of the pandemic, when there was a lot of attacks against Asian Americans, like my family was like a little hesitant about going out, and having the statement, you know, that we put out in, you know, after the Georgia attacks, like, it reinforced the idea that not only are we a safe and welcoming place here, but that Dahmer's Grove in general, you know, we are, we are a village, I see, we are a community anchor. And so we're modeling behavior for the community, and we're showing everybody that Dahmer's Grove and the library is a safe, that you can come into these doors and feel safe. And we won't let somebody, you know, attack you or anything like that, but we are here to be a safe space and a place where you'll find materials that you'll recognize yourself in, or where you want to learn about other people. It's, it's important, I think, to help bring people in, especially in times of crisis.
Well, they don't need me, but the only thing I would add is that today's point, the document is living because the people are living, right? And if the last two years hasn't taught us anything, it's that everything can change every day. And so as I think about new people coming into the community, who maybe didn't live here the last time there was an incident, but now there's an incident, and they want to know, how does my community, my library respond to an incident like this? When we make those statements, it brings us current with the community and where we continue to stand on these issues of concern. I think also sometimes people want to know, do we still stand where we once stood? Because people do change their posture and their positioning all the time on these issues, I think to show our consistency and our resilience and our stand, it will require us to articulate it as frequently as possible. Consider the possibility that 10 years from now, the last statement we made happened when the George Floyd incident occurred. What is, what are, what are we communicating and not communicating in such an extended period of time? And so I feel like those are also really valuable reasons internally and externally to continue to articulate our commitment, our resounding commitment to standing with this place.
And to add on, so to reaffirm our stance and our commitment, and as Cindy said, it also is very internal and external, and along with not just issuing the statement, but we also offer resources for our community members, and with our Equity Strategic Plan, we're offering even more resources for community members, community conversations, as well as training opportunities and programming and outreach, and we're continuing to do that. We have some exciting opportunities for our community members coming up in the next couple of months as well. I don't know if you want to talk about that, Cindy, since you're spearheading that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah.
So it really ties into it, so it's not just this, you know, external communication we're doing, but go ahead and.
Yeah, so, you know, at the, at the end of every statement, we do have a list of resources, and I feel like then you're not giving yourself enough credit, because then also curates like specific book lists of here are materials that you can read and learn more about whatever is happening, our communities that are in crisis. But, you know, we also have specific trainings, and so for example, you know, something we're really excited about is we will be starting to have trainings for the community in general, which, you know, I'm very excited about. We have a Dahmer's Grove native who will be presenting on just diversity and how it makes our community stronger, how to be a better ally, how to talk to your kids about racism, and we're doing a whole series with this individual, and I think, you know, it's a great opportunity for us to turn outward in addition to looking at ourselves.
Oh, sorry, I didn't speak yet, that's okay. But I did want to say thank you all, and to all the participants, and to all the RTR team that's here today, if people are not here today, we've seen, you know, milestones and information being shared at our board meetings, I heard of staff members and board members, including, and it's really been an amazing process to hear about and to hear how the library has really been seen by both staff and externally as a leader of this space. I think that's really amazing to see. And to your point earlier, Rashida, I can also really appreciate that, given all the work that I know that happened, to turn it into something as succinct and as clear as this document is really incredible. Remember, I appreciate it as well, to say, hey, I can adjust this, and I can understand it, and see how it will impact your work together, our work together, and everything's going forward. I did have a few questions about kind of how, so, I'm curious about a lot of things. You know, approving the Equity Strategic Plan, given that it is a living document, as you said, I think it absolutely needs to be, what does that look like to approve this? Does it mean it's approving, this is a starting claim, it's a validation, and then more of it added? Is that kind of what we're looking at as a next?
Absolutely. And it is our intention that this document be the starting point for our full strategic planning process, and that eventually it will be incorporated in some way into that full strategic plan. So we envision things like, when you look at the evaluations and benchmarks, there's a lot of like starting points in there, finding baselines and that sort of thing, and with the intention that the next step would then be measuring how we're doing along the way. And I believe that a lot of that will happen naturally as we get to the full strategic plan and incorporate this document into that larger document, and I think you'll see that there'll be some tweaks and some adds and some, and that's where the living document will really come in. And as you all know from our last strategic plan, we reviewed that annually, and there were generally some changes. There were dates for the timelines of implementation that moved around. There were things that we had said we were going to do that we had to tweak how we were going to do that, because what we thought we could accomplish just didn't fly in our community. So again, always a living document, and at least once a year, we'll be reviewing, looking at it, and making sure that we're making progress, and also that we are being true to the original intent.
One thing that I feel is important to note is that we're doing all of this work on EDI and anti-racist practices, I'm trying to figure out how to say this, and we did all that work on looking at the characteristics of dominant culture and white supremacy and all of that, remember? And if we are sitting in this room, and I'm sitting in this room, if we're sitting in this room, then we have a significant capacity to operate in dominant cultural ways of being. And so one of the things that I think we will have to be mindful of as we start to do implementation, is not taking all those characteristics that we learned about and superimposing them on top of work that's supposed to not be about that, right? This is not a problem to be solved, it is a tension to be managed. Remember in our training, we talked about whiteness as a social construct, it's not good or bad, it just is, right? And that there are ways of being that are rooted in whiteness that really help us to navigate the world well together. I would probably kind of show up wherever at whatever time if we didn't have an understanding of time together, right? Barnali's probably gone to parties and started two hours after whatever time they said they were going to stop. And so in that way, these characteristics just are, they only become problematic when we are over-reliant upon them in ways that cause oppression for other people. So one thing I think we have to be thoughtful of is, how are we managing those characteristics as we do this work that's supposed to be about hit MPGs, who aren't, who this isn't their central and core way of being? How do we monitor the ways that dominant cultural ways of being are informing how we carry out the plan? And that doesn't mean how do we stop it, because I believe that looking at our outcomes and analyzing where we're headed is a really important part of the work. I believe that looking at ways to quantify that work will be important, it just won't be the only way, right? And that there will also be qualitative analysis, there will be as much value in looking back at our process in a year to see what actually happened, as there will be in trying to forecast and project everything that happens. And so this is the dance that we now enter into as we try to begin to embody the plan. And I'm really happy that RGWU will continue to walk with DGPL in this process. I can tell you that two other libraries know about your plan already, and called me this week, and that really speaks to the significance, not that we want to get it all right, but the significance of us sharing in this work in an embodied way, because we are multiplying practices in other libraries because of what's happening here.
Well, I was curious also about, because a lot of the things that I've been anticipating or, you know, implementing for part of this plan involve significant staff work, and of course, you know, all of you in the Equity Advisory Team have been working really hard on just to get to this point, and now, of course, there's more, there's always going to be more, it's ever going to be done, right? So I'm wondering about how, how that will just kind of be embedded in people's roles, or.
Sustainable.
Sustainable and not for people, and then also kind of the Equity Advisory Team, how, I like how you documented how it did change in the last couple of years, how does it continue to be an active, vibrant group, and how do you keep it, you know, in the right kind of place for the library?
Well, one of the things that you'll notice is, is that an activity or an objective, now I can't remember. There is one about evaluating the staffing around our EDI goals and objectives, and taking a look at, do we need a staff member, several staff members, you know, how do we incorporate this work into our staffing plan? And so that is also in there, because we did recognize that it can't be, it can't be only one person, it can't be only this Equity Advisory Team, and yet we'll still need, somebody's got to spearhead it. So really taking a look at, how do we ensure that the staff we have have the capacity to do the things that we have laid out?
The other thing I would add to that is that we're continuing to be trying to be effective, but in the first year, it looked more like me pouring in, like, all this content, it was very didactic in nature, and in this next year, it's going to be the team bringing their authentic, actual work that's happening into the room for us to talk about how to make it synergistic, how are we looking at EDI every day and the work we're already doing, rather than seeing it as a separate component of the work? That's a pivot, it's a shift, but the more we start to. But the more we start to look at everyday cases, everyday interactions, then we start to see what's probably true that has always been around us all the time and we're just hiding our awareness and how we respond to it.
Any comments or thoughts on the Equity Strategic Plan?
Of course I do. You can show me over some time, but for all, I think the word "plan" is important. It's a plan, it's not a doctrine. Plan implies that it's a good thing. And the side trace from the plan sometimes, so. And I liked your comments and the fact that you call the library anchor. It's, it, anchor implies stability, but that doesn't imply stability. It can be a leader. And Andy said that she was hoping to share some of this with organizations like Uthala and like her church and so forth. And I do as well. I view this as ultimately an example, better than that even, an attempt that other groups in the community can use in the library, not only an anchor, but a leader in keeping the conversation going. I hope we're not starting the conversation, but we're going to keep it, keep it going. And by welcoming our staff and our customers and therefore the community can, I don't mean by example, it's kind of a term, but there's a little bit of that in what I'm saying. This is, this is going to be an important thing in our community, in actually our library. I started off by saying I'm confident that part of this group, and I really am, and it's appropriate, I completely accept this. I approve, I move that we approve the Equity Strategic Plan as presented, which is the starting point for the full strategic plan to be developed later in the year.
Do you have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Equity Strategic Plan as presented, it has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed through all of these?
Trustee Doreen, yes. Trustee, yes. Trustee Monfries?
Yes.
Trustee Luther, yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. We have approved the Equity Strategic Plan. All right, now we're on to another very important item, agenda item 8B. This was acknowledged in the last meeting and will be further acknowledged a little bit later that today is my last meeting as a board member and as president. And so, apparently my term as president expires in October. And so, we need to appoint the president to finish that term. So Julie, do you want to walk us through the nomination process of this board?
Well, actually, there was conversation, one-on-one between various trustees and some, and an individual rose to the top who I was willing to take on. So I, there, there has been a lot of discussion about who should take on this role. And quite frankly, every single member of this board, there is a reason that that person should, you know, would make a wonderful board president. But eventually, there has to be some consensus, so I will...
And you can also readdress this in October, then.
Yes. So together, the trustees determined that Swagney Gagani will be nominated as the next board president. And she has indicated that she is willing to serve. Somebody needs to move to elect...
How about, can I move?
Yes, you can.
I will move to elect Swagney Gagani as the next president of the Dominance for All Public Library Board of Trustees. And the third. Okay, we have a motion to approve the election of trustee Gagani as the next board president that has been seconded in third before. Caitlin, can you proceed through all of these?
Trustee Doreen, yes. Trustee, yes. Trustee Monfries?
Yes.
Trustee, yes.
Yes. Congratulations, Swagney. Yes, yes. Like it's the new of the final. Do we have any, we don't have any unfinished business?
We do not. Notice that this is the first meeting at which we are not re-authorizing the open plan and the workaround, so.
Okay, we're now on to agenda item number 10, the library director's report.
So I, unfortunately Jen could not be with us today, but I wanted to commend Assistant Director Jen Rieske on her fantastic work doing double duty as our access services manager right now. In addition to her work as our assistant director, she is managing the wonderful, the grants that we have received, which have a lot of paperwork that she's doing wearing her assistant director hat in addition to doing all of the access services manager end of that project as well. And I'm happy to say that yesterday we had second interviews for our access services manager position and we have determined who we are offering the position to. So please, fingers crossed, we'll be making an announcement soon. And I also want to mention that we had Nora Masti, who had been our cataloging librarian, had also left that position. Kira Middle, who is one of our adult and teen services librarians, has elected to make that, ask to make that lateral move into the cataloging librarian position. And so, starting in May, she will be training and moving over slowly, partially because we are also down another librarian in the adult and teen services area. So she's kind of going to be straddling the two departments for a few weeks while we make that transition. Also, special thanks to Kate Van Lightus and Scott Anderson for persevering through the mutinous transition and hopefully not pulling their hair out anymore about what is happening with this. They have really done an amazing job in just dealing with this change that has not gone smoothly. And we have, as I said, we have an opening in adult and teen services. So Lizzie Matkowski, our adult and teen services manager, is currently looking to hire two adult and teen services librarians. Allison Renell, our kids' room manager, is bringing on their new program coordinator as Tracy Skosik has moved into the assistant manager role. So we've got a lot going on with personnel right now. And I just again want to acknowledge PR managers Cindy Country and adult and teen services assistant manager Ben McGary on their wonderful work, their articles in the May, in the March issues of the Illinois Library Association's Reporter and in Library Journal. And we're not supposed to say anything, but look for a very big press release about the two of them coming in May. For, yeah. And last but definitely not least, thank you, Jonathan, for being the board president through all my entire tenure here. So it's, it's going to be strange to have someone else.
All right, we're now on to agenda item 11, trusty comments and requests for information. And I'll just acknowledge Julie's comment, yesterday is my last meeting and I want to thank you for the, you were new, I was new to the role. And I think that it's always nice when things are going smoothly, but it was also, I knew that I got harder and things weren't going as smoothly. And so, I think, you know, we got through, we got through those...
All steep roads.
Some of the roads together, and so thank you for that. I also want, just for the record, want to thank Mayor Mark Polley, who nominated me originally for the role to be on the board. And I think that, you know, I was trying to go back and kind of go through some of the big things that have happened in the last almost six years. And you have the strategic plan, of course, the Equity Strategic Plan, which I think are some of the highlights. I think I also just, you know, a lot of the day-to-day with budgeting, I really enjoy just being part of the library and being part, you know, being proud of here. I also recall the, you know, cover-to-cover, you know, a couple of times. It was great, I loved it. You seemed interested in what I had to say, which has been fantastic. So, you know, those were, you know, there's a lot of other things in between there that, you know, that happened. And so, yeah, it's been, it's been great. And I know that, I also echo Julie's point of, you know, I was thinking about this, thinking about who might be a good successor. It's like any of you, you all have the characteristics. And I'm happy that Swagney will be the president at least until October. So I know that, I know the board is in good hands and hopefully we'll get some of you who, I know the four of you will take care of the library and hopefully we'll have two new board members soon. And I would thank the staff as well, you know, you guys have been great. And Ed for showing up. Maybe I'll be there with you, you know. As expected, we got... Any additional trustee comments or requests for information?
Thank you. I think you have partnershiped with the staff. I've been on this board longer than anybody and maybe way too long, I don't know. But I think there has been a positive movement, some of it over the monthly roads, but positive parts and movement in the form of the library in our community. Maybe it's five years. So I would say in a lot of the previous years, all of them, so many children, there's a lot going on. And the pandemic was only one of them, not saying just the pandemic. So thank you, and I want to thank Jen for much of the work. So, you know, these ladies and gentlemen, what's your...
Additional trustee comments or requests for information? And just so everyone knows, this will be maybe my final comment, but after I adjourn the meeting, that is the effective moment of the appointment of Swagney as president. So do you have any additional comments? Yes.
I think, I think I mentioned this last time, I think it's really awesome that they, that there's now a staff Q and A for the board. And that's great, I think we talked about as a board about how we can have staff and how we can share what we're doing. So I'm curious about cues that happen at the Q and A and like how, whether the board, it can become more of a two-way communication versus a one-way sharing of information. Are there things that we can help address or help people understand about the work that we're doing? Because they're not here, here, doing, you know, in this room right now. I don't want to seem like this black box where, you know, this report goes in and then nothing comes out. At least now there's something coming out. Like, is there a way that we can respond to the questions or the things that are staff or reading up at those sessions? I know there's only been one, so maybe it's two or three that's out. But I'd be curious to learn more about, you know, maybe in the next few months, what that looks like.
And that actually might be a really great topic to throw up to tomorrow's recap to, to say, what do you think?
Great. Does there need to announce the committee of the whole meeting?
Yes, actually, actually, that's the adjournment that is the end of both yours. Because you're till the end of the day today.
Okay.
So technically, we're going in. Technically, we're adjourning this meeting and going immediately into a committee of the whole meeting where we're going to do a building tour. We're going to focus on the areas to be addressed in the workroom renovation project later this, later this year. So anyone who wants to walk around with us is welcome. We will not be, we'll simply adjourn when that is over and we will not be, there won't be any other action items.
Any additional trustee comments or requests for information?
I do too. For the person, I've noticed increasing references to banned community members patrons. Is that, would you say mostly a result of asking issues? Or is there an increase or am I, is it just documented in the way that it's being drawn?
Actually, there have been an increased number of behavioral issues by community members here in the library to the extent that we've had more calls to the police in the last six weeks than we did probably at total in the previous several years. So, yeah, they're centered around some very specific individuals who are now banned for their own lives. But on the positive side, our new safety and security model seems to be working very well. We're all working to support our building operations monitors in that position and how we can make sure that their own wellness and safety is taken care of as well and that we're providing them backup to the rest of our building.
Oh, yes. Well, and this is a positive one. I just, I got, I was looking over the recent issue of Discoveries and I was excited to see the reading club coming back. And I just wanted to thank all the members and staff that, you know, take part in putting together the themes each year. I just appreciate the extra step that this library, you know, puts into really generating a lot of buzz around that. That's pretty awesome.
And Allison Renell, our kids' room manager, is scheduled to be at our next meeting to talk to us about some of the reading content about the kids' room in general. So presentation.
Glad you're here, I guess you want to talk about that. You mentioned Discoveries, it's an excellent issue, attractive, lots of content. Two things in there, one is the library co-chairing, you know, for June for Pride Month. I think the library would use your role in that again. And also the fact that Uthala is going to be the organization of the month for June.
Additional trustee comments or requests for information? And I will adjourn this meeting.
Right. And we will start our committee of the whole meeting. Yes, we're going to lock, we're going to lock the door.
See yourself.
So you can leave while you're standing here. And any member of the public who comes, who wants to go on the building tour, it is posted on the agenda that they are to ask at the checkout desk. Caitlin has the radio so that they can radio and let her know if there's someone that needs to catch up with us.